The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards, boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, file with the township clerk, and post it on the district website. Can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Popovich.
Here.
Mr. Shonar.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
And Mrs. Dyke.
Here. And for this evening, Mr. Freethman will be playing the role of secretary as Mr. DeVita is unable to attend this evening. All right.
Should we protest now?
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. On the agenda. Okay, well, seeing none. All right, committee reports. Good evening, by the way. Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Fantastic. I apologize for starting a little late, but here we are. We'll try to expedite it. We're gonna try. Does anybody have any committee reports?
Yeah, I'll give an update on the Recreation Board Advisory Committee that I've met with. We met on February 8th, and Recreation Director Marissa Landolfi discussed some programs planned at the new community center, which included activities for our senior citizens, such as a nutrition site, hot lunches and that kind of thing, and exercise programs like Zumba and adult yoga. We discussed the community pool and the issues surrounding membership fees, and I'm sure that this is a discussion that will continue at tomorrow night's meeting. Mayor Pete Tonello is there, he's also on the advisory board. He gave us an update on the LRP project about the new all-purpose field. He said that within 30 to 45 days, he expects a Hovnanian to submit a preliminary plan, and then we can take up discussions with this board, and we could begin to move forward on that, so hopefully that'll come to fruition. He was of the mind that the field was probably not gonna take as long as the high school field because we're not gonna have the competitive track, so we're not gonna run into those problems, so he's expecting it to be a little more straightforward. He also floated the possibility of having another indoor recreation facility, which, as you can imagine, was met with great excitement from the rec board. This is an idea still in its infancy, though, so we'll eagerly wait to see how that develops. And lastly, Marissa indicated that they were looking to start third and fourth grade basketball league. I think currently they only have clinics at that level, so they're looking to do a league, and they're looking to start a golf clinic for ages three through seven. So, promising stuff for our young people. So, that's it.
That's great.
All right. Great. I attended the high school APT, and I put a flyer out for everyone, their big thing that they're gonna be doing besides, you know, we have project graduation they're working on, and also the Best of the Fest fundraiser they're gonna be doing on May 5th. And then I also attended the Music Matters meeting, and the big thing, obviously, besides the trips that they're taking, is also Sister Act. It's the big thing this weekend, so if you get a chance to go out this weekend and watch Sister Act, it's gonna be great. So, a lot of fun.
Fantastic.
That's it.
All right, well, in addition, Mr. Shonar and I attended our first budget meeting. Mr. Shonar is on the Budget Committee with me, so I will miss Ms. Burke, but I'm happy to have Mr. Shonar. So, we are tasked with reviewing all the line items in the budget and trying to come up with a fiscally responsible budget that most everybody will be pleased with. And tonight, we are going to have two budget presentations, and that's gonna continue for the next few meetings as well, right? Prior to us voting on the budget. And we meet again next week, this week, and next week, actually. Right?
Yes.
So...
Two more.
Fun discussions, right?
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, anyone else? All right, then we'll jump right into it. Tonight, we have two board presentations regarding the preliminary budget. First is, well, two, special services and technology. It looks like special services is gonna be first, with Mr. Kenny.
I'm just gonna have to stand on this side of it. Good evening. Tonight, we'll be presenting the proposed 2017-18 special services budget. A little bit about, first of all, how the budget is constructed. We start off by waiting for the state to come out with what's called a tentative tuition rate for our preschool, sorry, our private schools for students with disabilities. What that does is that gives us an estimated cost for those students that have to go out to those placements to meet their needs. That cost is a tentative calculation by the state. On the other end, at the end of the year or for the next two years, what could happen is the auditing of those private schools from their auditors, they get to submit what's called a back bill to us. So, for some reason, if the state came and said their tentative tuition rate was, say, $200 a day for a student, and they give that to us now, if they get audited during the following summer, and it says, "Well, you should've been charging $250 a day," we then receive what's called a back bill for those extra over, sorry, overcharges, or vice versa, if they come back and say, "You should've been charging $150." It's an undercharge, so therefore, we get the money back.
Does that part ever happen?
What's that?
Does that part ever happen?
I've been here six years, I saw it happen once.
Okay.
So, as far as us getting money back.
Right.
So, you still have a chance.
One out of six is not bad.
That's right. There's always hope. We, at the same time, collectively meet with the child study team, get our tentative projections. As you know, a projection for special services is very fluid, as I mentioned in my last slide. There are IEPs still being created as we speak, and then going forward to the end of the year. So, we do the best we can with projections as far as staffing, programs of what we're going to predict for the following year. We meet with the principals and the case manager collectively to talk about any type of new initiatives that we'd like to pursue. We meet with the child study team and service providers to discuss acquisition of materials, any new testing kits, which could range anywhere from $500 to $1,000 per testing kit, depending upon what it is you're looking at. We formulate the figures for the federal IDEA, or the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act aid that we get. Currently, myself and Mr. Michael DeVita have decided to go with 75 percent, so just a roundabout figure. Last year, we received about $340,000 in IDEA aid, but year by year, you take the chance of actually budgeting 100 percent of that, because at one point in time, the federal government could come back and say, "We can't give you the 100 percent now going forward to next year," so you play it safe, and you budget 75. This way, if you get the extra 25, you know, you're ahead of the game. We utilize all this gathered data, and we input figures on a sort of a Google sheet or a spreadsheet. We then tabulate that. We meet with the business administrator, we talk about our new initiatives, our rationale as to why the budget is what it is, and then from there, we go ahead and present to you guys. So, let's take a look at the different components of the budget. You obviously have tuitions, that's private schools with students with disabilities, and other local education agencies. So, we do send certain students to other towns in trying to keep with the least restrictive environment and working with other towns if they do have programs. So, again, those are placements outside of the Cedar Grove public school system for those students with those particular needs. Related services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, counseling, any speech, these are contracted services that we have to do in order to comply with certain IEPs for certain students. This section also may include any outside evaluations. We don't have on staff a psychiatrist, so anybody that is requiring a psychiatric evaluation, we have to then go outside and pay that psychiatrist for that evaluation. Extraordinary services are anything specific to an individual student, so one-to-one nursing, any private ABA services that, or an individual ABA service that a student may need. So, again, those are extraordinary services. Other sections, you have child study team, again includes testing supplies, workshops, travel, rental fee for copier, the yearly maintenance fee for IEP Direct. So, our computerized IEP system that we use is included in this cost for the budget. Supplies, this includes anything for special education teachers and related service providers, the materials that they may need to upkeep their programs. And the extended school year program, which, again, is the cost for teachers, any supplies that are related to that, related service providers, we pay for our nurse to be on staff during the summer, and the paraprofessionals that are a part of the summer program as well. So, the breakdown of the budget. We have tuition, $2,666,428. Again, this does not include, that number up top does not include the 75 percent of the, I call it offset. So, in essence, the $275,000 is not yet taken out of that number, because, again, even though you want to budget 75 percent, you still don't know what you're going to get. Related services is $449,000. Extraordinary services, $184,000. Supplies, $17,500. And the ESY is $40,890. So, when you do a cross-comparison from this year into next, we are going up a little bit in tuition because of anticipation of a student, as well as every year, the tuition goes up for most of the students that we do have placed out, that we anticipate, and obviously now have a tentative tuition cost for them. Related services, we went down. We're anticipating going down. Extraordinary services, with a decrease there. Child study team, going up a little bit for some of the anticipated evaluations that, anticipated evaluation protocols and testing materials that, you know, as the years go by, you can't keep using the old testing materials because they're coming back with new versions. They gotta make money, too, so therefore, you wanna make sure you're using the most up-to-date materials. ESY, we are going down, $10,000, due to the projections on who will be available or eligible for the extended school year program. So, in essence, we are just about the same, if not down $9,000. Now, again, keeping that in mind, what you need to know about this budget. It is a functional budget. It's not operational, which means that what I present tonight is not including the salaries of these special education teachers and the paraprofessionals, or the negotiated increases thereof. There are still programs, again, being developed for IEPs, for students. They go on right up until the end of the year, and then the budget is fluid as in any time during the year, during the summer, in the beginning of the year, they may be students that come to our doorstep, and now are residents with special needs that we may or may not be able to meet, so therefore, we have to place them in appropriate programs. So, the new initiatives for next year. With the increase in speech therapy, and also some of our speech therapists doing other tasks, including reading intervention for which they are trained, we're looking for an additional full-time speech therapist that most likely anticipated will be split between third and fourth grade in both elementary school buildings. A new configuration of replacement classes at the elementary level would give us similar, if not the same, programming, both at North End and South End. This way, when they move up to middle school, they've come from the same mold, shall we say. So, therefore, they're both having a K to 2 experience with one teacher, and a 3 to 4 replacement pullout in both math and language arts. So, that would require an additional special ed teacher at South End. The possibility of a new integrated preschool program at South End. Currently, we have 12 applications. The deadline is not closed. We have an open house March 9th. All right? The program is at a cost that we've put out there for $5,000 per year for an 830 to 305 program, which is very, very reasonable. We're anticipating after the open house, getting a few more. I'm shooting for 20 applicants, which would be a nice pool, and in that case, I would look to possibly open up that South End preschool program, which would not only allow students to return, because right now, we have a North End preschool program with South End students that are in it, they will return to South End, their home school, those that are preschool disabled in that integrated preschool program. We would eliminate busing for those South End preschoolers. Right now, the bus costs about $57,000 to do that, that transportation. So, the additional preschool teacher cost would be covered simply alone by eliminating the busing, but yet, on top of that, we're getting tuition as revenue in both integrated preschools. The use of the 504 Direct program. Tomorrow, during administrative meeting, we do have a 504 Direct webinar given by Frontline, the same people for IEP Direct. I anticipate that it will be very fluid as far as us being able to transition using it over the summer, and then going forward into next year, that's the goal. The anticipated cost for the setup, I believe, is about $2,500 for the initial setup, about $350 per year going forward, which is a very minimal cost for that, the maintenance of that system. And then the possible expansion of the Montclair State Child, sorry, Center for Autism and Early Childhood Mental Health Services. And when I say expanded use there, I'm more looking for professional development for our teachers in dealing with students with anxiety, with depression, having those people at the center come in and offer sustained professional development, which, you know, hearing from the principals more and more, both at the elementary and at the middle school level, it is truly needed. Questions, comments?
This is great. We appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, thank you.
And thanks for looking into the 504 Direct. I actually forgot, one of the committee reports is that Mr. Shonar and I had met with the special ed committee, and we reviewed parts of the IEP and the 504 audit that had been conducted earlier in the year. And we had gotten, we were shown how the IEP Direct works, and as far as everything is computerized, and it's just much easier to navigate, and it's easier as far as the documents and where to find everything, and there's a check by, checkbox, or, I'm sorry, step-by-step, so you have to have kinda all your ducks in order and everything signed before you can move on to the next thing. And it's kinda great, because in Genesis, you can pull up your child, and you can actually pull up the current IEP, which is pretty cool. And then, but for the 504, you can't currently do that, it's on a piece of paper somewhere. So, we had asked if it was possible, you know, if there was a 504 version of this, and we asked Mr. Kenny to look into it, because even though the 504 aspect is handled in Gen Ed and the IEP is special ed, we still felt it was important as far as the documents and everything, to have that on the 504 side. So, we appreciate you looking into that. Thank you.
Yeah, to have that streamlined, one system.
Absolutely. Right, and I just think that'll help as far as the documentation.
Agreed.
So, thank you. We appreciate that. All right, moving on, technology with Mr. Walsh.
Good evening. Tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about what we're doing in Cedar Grove with technology and how things are changing. Some of you have heard my reports in past years and what we've done and are doing, and things have been changing a lot in school technology. There's a big push to be the Future Ready Initiative and the 21st Century Classroom, and the way we did things six years ago, eight years ago, has changed a lot in schools. So, I'm gonna show you a small video first, done here by including some of our administrators and teachers, and then we'll get into talking about the budget and the changes.
I think there's no denying that education has evolved from the pen and paper and pencil to the Chromebook and Smartboard, and iPad and iPhone in the 21st Century. I think one of the most important things here at Cedar Grove High School is the fact that we need to try and stay current in regards to the technology, the ever-changing technologies that exists in society. Technology is continuously evolving as education and the days of rote memorization and engagement have changed in the classroom. And I think it's so, so important to engage students with technology and give them that grasp to want them to come to your classroom and continue learning and digest that information. And 21st century learning is so important to bring the real world into the classroom and give students an actual model of what they will have to come as they matriculate further through middle school and into high school.
Kids today are born with a different gene. They're born with a computer and a technology gene. They know that technology motivates them, and it helps them to learn, and it helps them to access information that we don't even think twice about. They just know what to do with it.
There are so many different ways that the children are able to use technology now, and so there are different activities that the teacher can use through Google Classroom, for example. They are able to do shared writing or modeled writing, and then those pieces are there, so they're memorialized. Back in the day, when we had chalkboards and whiteboards, you would erase those things and they'd be gone forever, whereas now, with Google Classroom and the Google Drive, all of our documents that they're working on can continue to be a work in progress, and they can go back and refer those documents and do other kinds of work with them.
There's some great applications available through the Chromebooks. Google Apps for Education, now the G Suite, is an amazing tool. The reason is, you can open a word processor, it's called Google Docs, instead of like a Microsoft Word, and what Google Docs allows students to do is they can actually work on the same document in real time with one another. It's just, you wanna see collaboration at its best, you put two students that may not have ever had a chance to really work together, and now they're working on the same project, they're doing research together, they can be in the same room, they don't even have to be in the same room, they can be in opposite rooms, they have a little chat, it's getting students to even become better typers, because now they're communicating using the chat. This is how business is gonna be done in the future, so it really helps with collaboration. One really good thing about having enough Google Chromebooks for everyone is now we can really utilize the Google Classroom. There's many times where I'm teaching, and I'm not sure, did the students really get what I just said, or did they really get what my objective was for that period, or even during that minute? And what I can do on the Google Classroom is quick shootout a question. Happened in real time, I send it out, the students get it, they answer it, I get their results immediately back, and I can say, and I can be confident that, yes, what I was trying to get across, the objective I was trying to meet was met, or, hey, this is something I need to spend a little bit more time on. That's hard to do without a Chromebook. That's hard to do with a piece of paper, because now you're handing out a piece of paper. Having students write things down, they may not, it takes time, whereas with this, this is almost instant, and I get it back. So, the Google Chromebooks with the Google Classroom, it's just, they were made for each other.
Our jobs as teachers are to inspire our students, and one of the ways that technology can do that is when they see that there is something more than just, than just taking notes out of a book or taking notes from a lecture, that this stuff can actually come to life.
Going one-to-one would definitely be a benefit. As a member of the technology committee, I have talked to many teachers, and they really keep asking, "When are we gonna be one-to-one?" And I believe that Chromebooks and one-to-one situation would be absolutely amazing, as long as it's used in a meaningful way. I've definitely been looking into how to get the most out of a one-to-one atmosphere, not necessarily just getting a book or even a textbook and putting it on a Chromebook, because now really, all you have is the same thing, but finding ways to use the Chromebooks to engage more students, to give students more of a choice in what they're learning about. I see it in my classroom a lot, where students have more of a choice on their assignments, and they get, I can get the objective done so much simpler, so much easier, and in a meaningful way. When students can relate directly to the project, they wanna learn more. If I have a writing assignment, and I let them pick, they can research a topic where something that they're interested in, it really, the quality of the work, the quality of the paper, the quality of the writing just increases, and that's what a one-to-one really does. Get students more engaged, give students more of a choice, and it really, I feel, helps students as a whole in their whole learning experience.
So, we're progressively seeing more teachers implement Google Classroom and Google Apps for Education. We are flipping our classrooms, and we're seeing teachers experimenting with that. They're continuing more technology and communication from school to home and bridging that gap.
For children, it's preparing them for their world. Many of the jobs that they will have don't even exist yet because technology is so rapidly changing. So, it is a tool in the classroom that is not only a necessity to prepare them for the future, but it really is there for us to help our children to learn more, to collaborate more, and to access information that will help them to learn better.
Okay, so now you all learned at least about Google Education. Google Apps for Education is now called G Suite. It's something the district adopted about two years ago. We started by switching our mail system. There's about eight core applications that come with Google Apps for Education. One of the best features, it's free for education. It allows the students to collaborate. The Google Classroom that Jeremy and some of the people were talking about is part of those core apps, and it allows teachers to set up classrooms of their students and send out things automatically to their students, to grade things automatically. There's a parent part of that, where you can tie a parent into the student in the Google Classroom, so the assignments that are going out into the Google Classroom can go to the parents also. Kinda like how we're using homework now, a little bit now, but a more 21st century way of doing that. When we first started switching over to Google Apps for Education, we had a lot of PCs in the district. We had PCs, labs everywhere, but in the classroom, we would only have one, two, maybe three computers plus the teacher's computer, just lack of electric power, a lack of space, things like that. The Chromebooks have given us the opportunity to get the technology out to the students. It's not replacing the teacher, it's just a tool for the students and the teacher to use, to let the students do a little personalized learning, go off and browse and learn the topic that the teachers guided them through, and finding different pathways to those answers. And we've had great success with it, and over the past three years, we've amassed a pretty good amount of Chromebooks. We're not one-to-one, we're maybe two and a quarter students per Chromebook, but we're getting there, because they're not as expensive as the PCs were. I think the teachers really like them, because they're in carts, they come to the room. All the kids in the classroom have Chromebooks at their desk when the teacher signs them out. So, it's been a pretty good thing for Cedar Grove. And you'll see that some of the changes in the budget, when we look at the type of items we've been buying. I'll switch over to this side for Joe's filming. Next year, in next year's budget, we're hoping to add two more Chromebook carts to the high school and two more to the middle school. You don't see the elementary schools up there, because right now, the elementaries are pretty much one-to-one. At North End, we are totally one-to-one as far as Chromebooks go. At South End, we're adding one more 30 Chromebook cart, and then they will be one-to-one also. We're looking at also buying then another 200 Chromebooks, only because there is a replacement rate on these. Our first Chromebooks are three years old now, they've held up very well, we've had a very low damage rate on them, because the kids do not take them home, they're just handed out in class. So, we're hoping to use probably 100 of those 200 Chromebooks to put those automatically right into the classroom, and then 100 will be set aside to be used for replacement as needed or work them in. And then 100 will be set aside to be used for replacement as needed or work them into the classroom and pull them out to be replacements. You can see PCs and tablets. We don't buy a whole lot anymore. Each building does have, like the media centers at North and South has a lab in the media center. The media specialists would like us to replace these with Chromebooks. The kids, that's what they're seeing every day in their classroom. So little by little, we're, we're taking out the 20th century labs and replacing them with Chromebook labs that are a little more free-form. During spring break, we'll be doing that at the middle school to Jeremy's lab and his Chrome bases, which look like PCs, but they're Chromebooks. We'll be going into the media center and then he will have Chromebooks and a little more of a free-form feel to his lab. District servers, you've, over the last couple of years, have heard me talk about that we were virtualizing all our servers. We use a product called VMware. We run a VMware stack in the high school. And that's really a combination of a couple servers and a large data storage device and lets us spin up virtual servers as we need them. Right now, our virtual stack is in pretty good shape. We don't need a whole lot of changes to it. We have budgeted a little bit in there if something does go down. Again, with the tech budget, you don't quite know. We're not going to go out and buy switches just because we budgeted for it. You know, we, we wait to see if something's failing, then it needs to be replaced. Software licenses and services are pretty much the same as we saw last year. We have our CIPA compliant filter, a trouble tracker, the backup of our Google Apps for Education because we do have some requirements to backup email and retain, retention rules. Green shutdown is what we used to shut all the technology off at night. It shuts it off, it saves us a, a large chunk in, in electrical bills. And then our different supports for our hardware support, those are our Dell servers that are in the VM stack, our antivirus licenses, which we still are buying. Once we don't have PCs, we won't be buying antivirus software. It's not needed on Chromebooks. We do do a lot of backups still from the stuff that's running off the VM server side. And we do cloud backups and local backups with some data replication to a different building. And then our Mero is our Wi-Fi, which is campus-wide. You could walk from one building to the next with your Wi-Fi connection, nothing changes. You stay logged in just like you, you were in the previous building. And then we also do the Channel 76 TV and that's our support contract with the people that help us do the, the way we can reproduce movies and do this live and stuff like that. This coming year, we figure we will need to add a few more access points. We pretty much have saturated the campus with enough access points, but we still will probably be adding 15 to 20 more access points. And we always need to replace a few extra wire runs or as the layout of rooms change, add some more CAT 5 or CAT 6 wire runs. Under general hardware, this is sort of the normal stuff we, we project out each year. We figure a few switches will go and the MDF IDF, that just means our main wire closets or our secondary wire closets. We do use Cisco switches in all our closets now. So we do budget that some of them are going to sunset and have to be replaced. Printers, that number's down a little bit because we find with the Google Apps for Education, they're not doing as much printing since you can collaborate and share and the teachers get all the documents in almost real time. There's not as much of a need to print everything and hand it in a print format. Smartboard replacements is one of our biggest items. This world of smartboards is changing, but what's happening is a lot of our smartboards are in the four to seven-year-old range. And when we replace that, this type of smartboard that's in the back of this room, the white smartboards that you've seen, we can buy the older style, not that style, but the older style board. We can replace that for about $1,000 when the touch part starts to go. What happens is though, then you end up with the projector going and that's, adds another $1,400. So the newest version of smartboard technology looks like flat-screen TVs. They do cost a little more, but we're thinking as we start replacing parts, we don't want to be replacing with old technology that just happens to be new, but it's still old technology. So we'll be replacing with the, if any of you have been down at South End or at high school, middle school, there's a few of those boards already in. And they just look like 65-inch flat-screen TVs that are touchscreens. And then we have a little bit of money in there for TV station equipment and video equipment and then some unanticipated hardware, software expenses. So these are our totals. The budget is flat with last year and that's just a breakdown into the categories we've been using over the past years. Any questions or any thoughts or things I can help answer?
I just have a question.
Sure.
So you said it, it's, it's flat compared to last year.
Yes.
So those numbers right there are exactly the same as the previous year?
The budget total number is the same.
And that's even with adding the, all the Chromebooks and all that other?
Correct. Chromebooks are on us, when we buy new Chromebooks, the first time in the district, they, they're on about $250 and approximately $25 for the Google license. If one breaks to the point it can't be repaired, we buy a new Chromebook. We don't buy a new Google, we don't have to, we reuse the Google licenses. So where in the past, PCs were running us anywhere from $600 to $800 each. Chromebooks are running us $250 each. We now have approximately 1,100 Chromebooks in the district. So we're, we're getting, we're, we're working towards that one-to-one goal. And with Mr. Featherman and our Technology Committee and our Future Ready Committee, we've been working on a plan of how, of getting these into the enterprise and being used in a way to really increase the way the kids are learning. We, we don't want it to become just a computerized notebook for them.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree. So I guess my question then is when we talk about the two Chrome carts at the high school and the two at the middle school and the, where it says two Chromebooks, 200 for that total, is that the same exact amount then that we spent last year on Chromebooks as well?
On Chromebooks?
I'm just trying to understand how it's flat from last year to this year if we seem to be adding an awful lot of...
Well, we, we, we are, well, we're still adding, we're adding 120, 320 Chromebooks. That's probably about what we bought last year in Chromebooks. We're spending a little less on the server side. I think last year we spent 30, 35,000 on the server side where we're looking at about 10,000 this year. Our antivirus is down by a couple thousand dollars because we don't need it for the Chrome. So various items have come down and computer hardware nowadays tends to last a little longer than it did in the past. So we haven't had to replace as many things as we felt we would. We feel Chromebooks, we're going to probably get four to five years out of them. With PCs, we used to try to sunset a PC after five years. And, but that was more in the past because the technology was changing. The PCs were getting faster and faster and faster. That's not really happening so much anymore. Now it's important, it's fast internet and more RAM, not so much faster processing speed. And so, you know, we're buying less of some things. Last year, we spent more on wireless. We added a lot more access points in so that almost every room has its own access point because all these Chrome devices are also used in our map testing, in our park testing, in our WiDA testing. It makes that much easier for the students and the teachers because they all have apps for them. You don't have to run around and reconfigure 400 PCs to run something special.
No, absolutely. So I guess if we're adding another 320 Chromebooks for this year, or that's the budget for right now, how many Chromebooks do we have right now?
Approximately 1,100.
1,100?
And now we'll be adding 320, but we're putting 120 of those right into production. We just don't know. We, we, we figure, we want, we want to plan to buy 200 more and probably take 100 of that 200 and put that right into production in the classroom, thinking that, that the other 100 might be there for end-of-life Chromebooks.
Are we at end-of-life?
They get to a point where they're not repairable.
So how old are our oldest Chromebooks then?
Uh, next year, they'll be in the, they'll be four years.
Okay, and you said that they last four to five?
We're hoping that. Google sunsets them at six. Most tech coordinators, originally we were looking at three to four years. We use all HP Chromebooks and we've had a very low damage rate at this point. I would say probably less than 5%, which is a little surprising when schools used to buy notebooks for, all around. Notebooks were breaking fairly quick. You'd be lucky if you got two to three years out of a notebook or, or the battery for a notebook. The Chromebooks have held up much better.
Okay. Just going forward, it'd probably be helpful to have like what Mr. Kenny had where it had the breakdown for the prior year budget and then the current year budget. And I guess that goes for any other presentations that we have coming in the next few weeks, just to see where we were.
Sure.
Because, I mean, while your point of, you know, okay, well, wireless points are down from what they were, it would be interesting to see how much that aspect of the budget is down and what went up as a result of being able to save money on those, that category.
I can certainly put together easily and shoot that out to
Okay.
To all the board members, the, the category differences between last year and this year.
Great.
Okay.
At the high school, what's the Chromebook ratio to the students generally? I mean, is, is it two to one?
Let me grab my list.
Yeah, okay. I'm just curious what the ratio is up there.
So at the high school, we have 513 students. We have 276 Chromebooks. And we do have a pilot program that we are starting with the fourth marking period. Because we don't have one-to-one there, it's generally considered not advantageous to give all of ninth grade Chromebooks, but not 10th grade. But, so what we're looking at on a pilot project is to give a subject area and one to two teachers that are in that subject area where they have access to Chromebooks every period of the day for their kids. And so we're doing that with Derek DeGudoo. We'll be starting that project. Actually, he's been doing that with the Chromebooks we have. He's been getting a cart as often as he can, but about three weeks from now, he'll have his own cart in the room.
So if that's subject heading?
That's subject area.
Everyone in that subject heading is going to work on?
Yep. And he's going to use the Chromebooks for his textbook, for his research, for the Google Classroom, for all submissions of work by the students. And I think, you know, it'll be, he's real excited about it. He's been really moving forward with it.
Okay.
Anything else?
You mentioned that there was a licensing fee though. There is a $25?
It's about $25.
How do they do that?
We, that's to put it into our domain. So even though it's not the same as what was the Microsoft domain, we do have a Google domain that mirrors our, our network domain. And so if you were buying a Chromebook for, at home, you don't have to buy that. Once you put it into an enterprise, you have to, you buy this license, but it's a one-time license. So if you, if we have 1,000 licenses and 1,000 Chromebooks and we had to sunset 200 Chromebooks, we don't have to buy 200 more licenses.
That's what I wanted to know, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're, they're interchangeable?
Yes.
It just depends on the...
We just de-enroll it and it adds, it goes to our license count goes up. And then when we enroll another one, it, it uses up the license.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, yes.
And the Chromebooks are great, by the way. My son does a lot of his work on it and it's, it's truly helpful as far as everything is saved as you do it. And despite the fact I spent an hour trying to set up the Google printer the other night, it's great stuff.
Bob Crispin can do all pretty.
Something about
Yes.
Somebody owns it in the house and they have to share it or some nonsense like that and then they're not home to authorize the sharing. So, but it's great. All right. And next time, we'll be hearing about, for budget purposes, do we know what the next presentations are?
Yes, we'll be hearing about all of the curricular and co-curricular areas as well as maintenance, buildings and grounds.
Exciting.
Really.
And will that include maintenance for our new wonderful field? That's going to be great. See, it was a segue.
Absolutely. I wasn't sure how to, yeah, I guess.
All right.
Just play the part of the secretary tonight. Just say, I'm just a secretary here tonight. I'm just taking notes.
Exactly. All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Moving on, on the agenda.
We're going to fly to this part, right?
We are, except for that two-page that I have to read. It's fantastic. All right. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion for B1 through B4?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of February 7th, 2017. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of Jan-, for the month of January 2017. B3 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of January 2017. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrances and expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation in violation of the code. And further pursuant to such code, no major account or fund has been over expended in violation of the code. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Which meeting was I at?
Oh.
It was the one.
Executive minutes of February 7th.
It was going so well.
I think I abstain from B1 and I to B2, 3 and 4. Right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. We'll go with that.
Go with that?
Yeah, because, yes.
Correct. Mrs. Dye?
Yes.
We're so well organized.
Trying to mess it up for him.
Sorry. It's okay.
You know, we're doing this on purpose, right, Mr. Featherman?
It would appear that way.
I have a motion for B5.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to pay the following list of bills that were in our packet this evening. Any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
I'm abstaining from B5.
Mr. Valero.
I also abstain from B5.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
And Mrs. Dye.
Yes.
All right. Can I have a motion for, under business, for B6? You know what? B6 through B10. Because the other two were really long.
So moved.
Second.
B6 is a motion to approve the fourth quarter 2016 unemployment tax payment. B7 is a motion to approve the subscription, subscription busing contract with the parents of the student listed therein, or students listed therein in the amount listed for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year. B8 is a motion to accept the donation of a classic sport foosball table valued at approximately $500 from the Lascazio family of Cedar Grove. The table will be used for students that are unable to take physical education for excused medical reasons. B9 is a motion to approve the annual contract support agreement with Computer Solutions, Inc. for the 2017-18 school year in the amount listed therein. And B10 is a motion to approve Emma Lang's payment application number 11 in the amount listed therein for work done at the Cedar Grove High School. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. I have a motion for B11 and, actually, B11 through B13.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. B11 is a motion to renew membership in the pooled insurance program of New Jersey. And I have to read it. Okay. Whereas a number of boards of education in various counties have joined together to form a joint insurance pool as permitted by NJ Title 18A-18BN, whereas said pool was approved effective July 1st, 1984 by the New Jersey Commission of Insurance and has been in operation since that date. And whereas the bylaws and regulations governing the creation and operation of this insurance pool contain elaborate restrictions and safeguards concerning the safe and efficient administration of public interests entrusted to such pool. And whereas the Board of Education of Cedar Grove has determined that membership in the pooled insurance program of New Jersey is in the best interest of the district, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Cedar Grove does hereby agree to renew membership in the pooled insurance program of New Jersey and hereby accepts the bylaws as approved and adopted. The renewal term is from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2020. Be it further resolved that the board secretary/business administrator is authorized to execute the application for membership and the accompanying certification on behalf of the district. And be it further resolved that the board secretary/business administrator is authorized and directed to execute the indemnity and trust agreement and such other documents signifying membership in the pool as are required by the group's bylaws and to deliver the same to the executive director. B12 is a motion to approve the pooled insurance program of New Jersey Fund Membership Indemnity B twelve is a motion to approve the pooled insurance program of New Jersey Fund Membership Indemnity and Trust Agreement. Whereas, several local school districts have collectively formed or are in the process of forming a school board. He said I had to read it, don't interrupt.
Oh my god, I don't think so, but go ahead.
Well, in the interest of the main board secretary not being here, we're reading it.
You're just making it take longer for him.
School, now I've lost my place. Whereas, the several local school districts have collectively formed or are in the process of forming a school board pool as such an entity is authorized and described in the NJSA eighteen A, eighteen B and the administrative regulations, oh god, permodulated pursuant thereto, and whereas, the board has agreed to renew membership in the pool to share in the obligations and benefits, what are you doing?
If you want to read it, they have to hear you.
I'm yelling it.
No, I'm getting words in the back, you're not hearing it.
Really? Because I feel like I'm like in a town hall announcing it.
You're doing great, go ahead, you're doing just great.
And now I've lost my place again.
Oh, you're not starting over again.
Whereas, the board has agreed to renew membership in the pool and to share in the obligations and benefits flowing from such membership with other members of the pool in accordance with and to the extent provided for in the bylaws of the pool and in consideration of such obligations and benefits to be shared by the membership of the pool. My gosh. I'm sorry.
Next page.
You're doing great.
Now therefore, it is agreed as follows, the board accepts the pool's bylaws as approved and adopted and agrees to be bound by and to comply Sorry. Really? Stop. With each and every provision of the said bylaws and the pertinent statutes and administrative regulations pertaining to the same, the board agrees to participate in the pool with respect to the types of insurance offered by the pool. Self-insured workers' compensation, property liability, auto crime, excess liability, environmental, school board legal and any other insurance offered by the pool allowed by law. The board agrees to renew membership in the pool for the period of three years, the commencement of which shall begin July first two thousand seventeen. The board certifies it is never defaulted any claims if self-insured and has not been canceled for non-payment of insurance premiums for a period of at least two years prior to the date hereof. In consideration of membership in the pool, the board agrees that it shall jointly and severally assume and discharge the liability of each and every member of the pool, all of whom as a condition of membership in the pool shall execute a verbatim counterpart of this agreement and by execution hereof, the full faith and credit of the board is pledged to the punctual payment of any sums which shall become due to the pool in accordance with the bylaws thereof, this agreement or any applicable statute. If the pool in the enforcement of any part of this agreement shall incur necessary expense or become obligated to pay an attorney's fees and or court costs, the board agree to reimburse the pool for all such reasonable expenses, fees and costs on demand. The board and the pool agree that the pool shall hold all monies paid by the board to the pool as fiduciaries for the benefit of the pool claimants, all in accordance with NJSA eighteen A, eighteen B. The pool shall establish separate trust accounts for each of the following categories of risk and liability. Claims or loss retention fund, administrative, workers' compensation premium. Finally, the pool shall maintain trust accounts aforementioned in accordance with NJSA eighteen A, eighteen B, the pool's bylaws and such other statutes as may be applicable. Specifically, the claims or loss retention fund trust account shall be utilized solely for the payment of claims, allocated claim expense and excess insurance or reinsurance premium for each such risk or liability or as a surplus. Oh gosh, number nine, each board who shall become a member of the pool shall be obligated to execute this agreement.
And thirteen.
Well, that one's at least exciting. B thirteen is a motion to retroactively approve on first reading the proposal to allow the qualified wrestlers from Cedar Grove High School to attend the NJSIAA Individual Wrestling State Championships in Atlantic City, New Jersey from March third through the fifth, two thousand seventeen. And there, we are actually sending two wrestlers this year, we're sending Daniel DePrenda and we're sending Anthony Clarizio. So best of luck to them this weekend.
That is exciting.
It's very exciting, absolutely.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Are you kidding?
Gosh, roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes.
Should we ask her to explain them?
From the office of the superintendent of schools, under personnel. Do we have a superintendent report today?
We do.
Fantastic.
We have hard copies of the full report on the side, we'll post it on our website tomorrow.
Is there a slideshow?
I'll do a very brief slideshow with a couple of quick pictures, just to bring some things to life here.
We were going to ask you to explain those.
Dying over here, gotta tell you.
So Kenny got on the bathroom, she's reading me.
So as we do once a month, we should bring that superintendent's report to life. Let's do it. Who resists that phone? This guy's one of the best phones I've seen in a long time, Alex Costa, my man, selected by the history department. How cool is that? This guy's known to carry around a pocket version of the US Constitution. You never know when you'll leave. Hey, Alex, we'll go with that. We're real proud of Alex, Alex has done a great job. AP scholar, leader, just a great young man to spend time around. He's up to his eyeballs, getting ready for Sister Ash as the lead for that sound in tech crew, so we've seen a lot of Alex this week and this weekend. Hold on, Alex.
I'm going to miss it. This weekend. I'm going to miss it. I'll be on the cruise.
Kindness and mindfulness sweeping our schools. Some great things going on. Please read the full report for the full description. What block of the building on the South End? What a great program we have going on down there. How about the One Hundred Day School? If you look closely at that photo here and zoom in on this, it says Featherman for President, if you want to watch. One of my, my friends, one of my students there. Thought that I'm the one who did the present, that's the special people. I'm honored. In Northern, has launched a one book, one school program, Mindful Monkey Happy Panda by Lauren Alderberg. With support by the FSA, has purchased a copy of the book for each class. The entire school in Northern will be using this book. They'll be undertaking age-appropriate exercises that are related to the monkey. Check it out for a full read, it's real exciting stuff. Thanks to the FSA, it's a lot of this stuff. How about a brief snapshot of some things going on at Memorial School? Yes, they're making headlines again, the Honor Choir and Google Hangouts. How cool is that? Want to congratulate a few of our students that submitted audition tapes to the New Jersey Elementary and Junior High Honor Choirs. Five of the many students that submitted audition tapes were selected. We're Contenza and John Alley's, the junior high honor, honor choir, I'm sorry. How about Pete Wilson, Liliana Ruffel and Kim Lonnie Tenella, selected to elementary Honor Choir. Congratulations to them all. The performance will be down in Huntington on May sixth. They'll be working between then and now, get ready. Great stuff. What about some Google Hangouts going on? We thought, as part of the tech community and as part of some of the things we've been working on, how cool would it be to have our fourth graders hang out through Google? Via live Skype, if you will. So rather than talking about transitioning to middle school, let's have them hang out via Google and chat with those kids. So kids here in Northern and South End were actually able to, you know, beam right on in, if you will, and chat with their, their peers. What a great experience it was for, for all of them. And the older kids got a chance to sort of, you know, show their wares and sort of, you know, pass on some of the old tricks they've learned. Had to spend most of the year here at the middle school. And our fourth graders just thought, wow, how cool it is to just sort of hear the inside scoop. Quick reminder, Sister Ash, that is this week, and Thursday from through Saturday. You've got your tickets, we'll see you there. And touching upon again the future ready initiatives that we've got going on, Mr. Valero and I have joined the leadership task force. Mr. Vino, Mr. Walsh and Miss Liddy have joined the education classroom practices and technology support services task forces. What are we tasked with? We're tasked with creating the rubric that will ultimately lead to a certification program for our future ready schools in New Jersey. We're real excited to be on the ground floor of this initiative. Are you future ready? Are you hashtag future ready? Well, we're going to find out. We're going to help build a bridge to get schools from where they are today to where they want to be successful. Digital ready Keystone Law. Construction continues at Cedar Grove High School, opening day, I want caution to be still uncertain. While we've had some successes, we've made progress. I want everyone to know that the field complex is still behind schedule. By noon this morning, the baseball field simply is not ready. You know, we've had a mild winter, but we have had a winter. So that sod has not knitted as we would have liked it to have. Frankly, it wasn't put in place early enough to be called. So I want everyone to be aware that we're not going to allow our kids or students athletes on there until we've got certifications that it is safe to play with. Now, I'm standing up front, asking you for your patience and thank you in advance for that. Please understand that the turf field is not ready either. It's not ready, we've had some poor kids out there already and we've had to politely ask to remove themselves and they did so. Nothing told twice. It looks so inviting, but again, I'm asking caution to the community, it's not ready yet. We don't, we don't own the fields yet, so to speak. They're still under what's considered a construction zone. We still have some issues that we're working out with the track, with the, the inlay of the lines across the soccer. Well, I'm at synthetic field. So we've got the, the field turf people coming back in. So what's my point? It's not ready yet. We're frustrated by that, myself, my team is frustrated by that. We know that our athletes whom we've, we've almost promised that that baseball field will be ready for opening day, it's not going to be ready for opening day, which is Friday. Well, Mr. Featherman, when will it be ready? We simply don't know. We simply don't know. We've got their team of people, our architects, all hands from on deck again today. We're evaluating what's still needs to be done, in terms of the irrigation system, in terms of the play, in terms of the pitch of the sod and how it's knitted and so on. So we'll push out some updates about what we need. Anytime in April would be an optimistic hope. I should just drop them there, I know, just drop it. I did want to plug, as Mr. Kenny mentioned before, integrated preschool. We do have this, this thought that someday we would open an integrated preschool at South End as well. We've recognized for a couple of years now that we're asking the folks from South End to, to get their young ones on bus and come to Northern. I think it's at a great expense to the district, but it's also, you know, a school bottom there, right? So with increased enrollment and with some reduced transportation costs, we're hoping to open, this is a hopeful thought, to open integrated preschool program at South End, that's what I'm saying. Stay tuned. If you're considering applying for an application, we have an open house coming up soon. We hope to see you.
Maybe I should just reread the insurance thing, that would be uplifting at that point?
Yeah, sorry.
All right.
She want to go back to the insurance thing?
Yeah, I was going to reread that and get everybody's mind off that badness, you know? All right, well, can I have a motion under personnel for S one through S eighteen?
So moved. Second.
S one is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S two is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation and bullying from February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. S three is a motion to retroactively approve Jessica Renshaw, Memorial Middle School maternity leave replacement music teacher. And that's effective February twenty-fourth through June twenty-third. S four is a motion to rescind and backing from the after-school coral stipend and zero-period coral stipend as of February twenty-eighth and approve Renshaw for both after-school coral and zero-period coral stipends from the, prorated from March first to June twenty-third. S five is a motion to rescind backing from MMS drama production stipend as of March first and approve payment for prorated stipend from December sixteenth, two thousand sixteen through February twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. S six is a motion to approve Dee Candia for the MMS drama production stipend as of March first through May thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, prorated. S seven is a motion to approve Susan Casale. Did I say that? Cassal. Memorial Middle School maternity leave replacement math teacher, prorated, starting March thirtieth through June twenty-third. S eight is a motion to retroactively approve Gianna Castelli, Memorial Middle School maternity leave replacement resource teacher, effective February twenty-seventh through May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. S nine is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. And that staff would be Emmanuel Sargent, boys assistant JV lacrosse coach, starting March third, two thousand seventeen. And John Murphy, girls assistant JV lacrosse coach, also starting on March third, two thousand seventeen. S ten is a motion to accept the resignation of Lauren Petro, Memorial Middle School and Cedar Grove High School teacher of ESL, effective Friday, April fourteenth. S eleven is a motion to accept the resignation for reason of retirement of James Canizio. Canizo, sorry, high school teacher of art, effective July first, two thousand seventeen. S twelve is a motion to approve with parental consent, grade four, South End teacher Pamela Witchet to complete her action research project evaluating how brain breaks in the classroom affect her students' behaviors and ability to concentrate. S thirteen is a motion to the fol-, to approve the following as school volunteers. S fourteen is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S fifteen is a motion to approve Peter Villardi, volunteer softball coach for the two thousand seventeen season. S sixteen is a motion to approve authorize, or I'm sorry, a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. And seventeen is a motion to approve the following leave of absence. There's quite a few. S eighteen is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion? I just want to say on S nine, I want to thank everybody who was kind of involved in the, in the search for lacrosse coaches. We appreciate that and we're happy to announce that we're hiring two individuals who have lacrosse experience.
Indeed.
And we are very excited about that.
We are.
And, and I just wanted to again, thank the other teachers who had come forward and offered to help with this. But obviously, having people who are experienced will probably help us a little bit more, but we still appreciate them stepping up and offering their assistance, so.
If I may just say a word about Mr. Canizo. Folks that know Mr. Canizo have been in the district, he's been here for three decades and as a teacher and coach. And so, you know, when you lose someone, when they've, they've, they've heard that voice that says it's time to go, you know, it's bittersweet, certainly. And Mr. Canizo is, well, he's, he's, he's been there and done that. And so we appreciate his commitment to the district, as I'm sure the board does as well, for, for the many, many years of service. You know, there are countless students for which he's set them on a trajectory, whether it's going to RIT or, or to, to RISD to, to pursue a career in cartooning, illustration and art, and for that we are, we're grateful. So, Mr. Canizo, thank you.
Absolutely, we have a number of people, a few people who we are losing this year to retirement, so. It's great for them, not so great for us. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under policies and regulations, you're not going to read any of these again, right, because you already did, okay, thank you.
You sure?
Why not? Why don't we just go through each one? Whereas.
You're riot tonight, you're on fire, Mr. Mandala.
He is.
Just saying.
You make a comment about chicken and that's it, it just doesn't right.
Mr. Featherman, could you pull those policies out, please?
We just got to make sure everybody understands them, we should read each one.
I don't know, was Mr. Mandala here when we read all of them, because maybe we should read it to him. I don't know if he was here that night.
We did read all of them.
All right, can I have a motion for S nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
S nineteen is a motion to approve on second reading the following policy updates, revisions, all of which the board has reviewed. Any discussion? Are you sure?
Do you want to ask any questions?
No, I'm good, yeah. Vin and I went through it all, we're good.
Ad nauseam.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S twenty?
So moved.
Second.
S twenty is a motion to approve the following curriculum that has been revised or aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes, we're almost there. Can I have a motion for S twenty-one under contracts?
So moved.
Second.
S twenty-one is a motion to approve the renewal service agreement with light path for internet, voice and video services at the cost listed therein. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Fantastic.
I thought you were kidding. No, I'm just kidding.
Do you want to, or do you want to look? I just came to say thank you from the lacrosse club and from the high school lacrosse parents. I know that we came here two and a half weeks ago and kind of, under the gun, asked you to help or let us help. help or let us help, and I think you did a good job, and I appreciate the way that Mr. Featherman and Mr. Gokrdi and Mr. Magilli expedited the process, that we do have two coaches in place for Friday. We're very excited about our varsity season, and while I'm here, I wanted to invite you all to a pep rally that the youth club is hosting for the high school. It's going to be March twenty-fourth, seven P.M., Panta Park. Hope you can all come, and if you don't know much about lacrosse, please come out to some